This conference will now be recorded.
Anne, can you hear us?
I can hear you now. I had to get on my phone, but I think this will work.
Did you want me to make you the presenter, or do you want me to pull up that document you sent over?
If you'd pull up the document, that would be great. I was going to, um, I was going to want you to make me the presenter, but given my go-to-meetings issues, if you could do it, that'd be great. Okay, can you hear me now?
Yeah, try again. Can you hear us? Looks like it's muted. So Anne, we can't hear you, but it shows up like your microphone's muted.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Okay, great. This happens every time. For some reason, it takes a minute to get go-to-meeting to work. Do you want to launch right into the presentation? I understand that there were things people wanted to talk about.
If, um, Anne, I'll just go through this real quick, too. So anyway.
Zach, y'all are, y'all are cutting in and out. I didn't, I wasn't sure if you were intentionally muting it.
Unless it's actually turned off, because that's the only source of audio going in there. So you'll just press this button here, turns green, and then the top turns red, and that means it's on. And then, once you're done speaking, just turn it back off. That's simple. So she shouldn't be able to hear you. Oh, I'm guessing that's why. It's probably confusing. If nobody's on, if nobody has a mic on, she probably can't hear us at all. So that would make sense. But Anne, if you just want to go ahead and jump right into the presentation, kind of give us an update of where everything's at, and then we can go from there.
Great. Thanks for having me, everyone. I look forward to being there in person with you soon. Um, so what I wanted to do tonight is I want to be available. I know, I understand that there are questions, and I understand from talking to, getting a debrief from your last meeting, and also Susan's comments at the last Board of Commissioners meeting, that you wanted to have some more information about special use permits. So this has some information about special use permits, and I'm sure there will be discussion about that in the UDO. But I did want to make a real point to have us move on to the planning board involvement in the KAMA and Comprehensive Land Use Plan process, because that process, you know, has been moving along. We've had public meetings, and so we want to give an update here, and then talk about and ask for the planning board to, to be community liaisons, to get informa-, to get information, to get input back into that planning process. As you all know, the planning board needs to take a very strong role in that process. And also, public input is vital to understanding people's, people who live in the town and other stakeholders, their vision for the future, their concerns and aspirations. I, and then, so we'll launch right into that. Zach, can you go to the next slide? So in general, what we heard at the beginning of the process, at the beginning of the UDO process, we spoke to staff, we took, spoke to some major landowners, we spoke to a couple of developers, and, and also, of course, to the steering committee. And what we heard was that the existing ordinances are burdensome, especially for small developments, that there is currently no way to permit a use that's not listed in the ordinance, and that developers, some developers have considered coming to Cape Codderet, but then moved to neighboring localities due to onerous town oversight. Next slide. So in order to address all of these, the draft UDO that you have in front of you enables special use permits. A couple of things. One, special use permits are enabled by Chapter 160D currently, but were enabled by previous general statutes. 160D does offer clarity, making the special use permit the only phrase, and replacing conditional use permits and special exceptions, which I promise you will create a lot better clarity in all of North Carolina. I think it's a great, it's a really great change. And so special use permits are currently used by many localities in North Carolina and across the US. And the, the goal is to allow flexibility while allowing for town oversight and public input. Next slide, please. So to go back to, again, we're talking about two different projects here, but since you're involved in both of them, as, as are we, I want to hit on both of them. For the KAMA and Comprehensive Land Use Plan, you've met probably most, a lot of these people, myself, Aaron Hutchins, who's in Wilmington, we have Craig Wilson and Michael Stapler here in this office, Eric Caribori in Raleigh, Joel Webney here, and then also Sierra Fisher, who's in our Hillsborough office. Next slide, please. So KAMA Land Use Plan, it, it comes from the Coastal Area Management Act, which has been in place since the 70s. And the, and the goal is to protect coastal areas and the state's natural resources. It, a KAMA plan has very specific elements that need to go into it, very specific maps, very specific data. A lot of it comes from state and federal sources. And the KAMA plan, like a comprehensive plan, has opportunities for public involvement. And then also, in order, the KAMA plan to do KAMA permitting, you have to have the KAMA plan. And then the goal is to shape the community and the future growth, obviously. Next slide, please, Zach. So a comprehensive plan is, I'm sorry, I did not make this slide. I think it's overly complicated. But, um, so a comprehensive plan, the idea is that a lot of data goes into it, a lot of public input goes into it. And it's the same idea, that it's the major guiding document that, that helps a locality make land use and funding priorities decisions over years. And the idea is that it shapes the locality over time. Now, because you're an east, eastern Carolina locality, you're subject to both KAMA and comprehensive plans, which are required by Chapter 160D of your general statutes. Next slide. And the goal here is that we're making one plan that will satisfy the comprehensive planning requirements of Chapter 160D and the KAMA requirement. So we're just combining them into one plan, and it will be a comprehensive plan with a lot of natural resource protection and environmental hazard elements to it. Next slide, please. Great. This is a, this is actually an image that Susan had requested at the beginning of the process that I think will be helpful in, for, for understanding all of these. Again, you see a map at the top, and that is the darker counties are counties that are subject to KAMA requirements. And then the rest of all of the other counties are subject to the comprehensive planning requirements. Again, you have Chapter 160D of the general statutes, and then you have the Coastal Area Management Act. Those are both affecting your land use plan, and, and the 160D affects your Unified Development Ordinance. All of these affect life in, in this town. If, this is probably a better thing for people to digest outside of a PowerPoint, but I'm happy to answer questions if you have them. Next slide, please. And I think before we go into our update, I think what's important is to understand is that in order to enact zoning, all localities have to have a comprehensive plan in place. And because there are two, because you, that, excuse me, in place by July 1st of 2023, 2022. Because you have to have that, and because the Coastal Resources Commission needs to sign off on the KAMA plan, this means that the deadline, the target deadline of December 31st for having this process complete is, is a real deadline, because we can't control how quickly the Coastal Resources Commission approves the KAMA plan. So getting it finished by December 30th, it probably will be by December 20th. And then, and then having some time for public input and final edits, I apologize for the motorcycles outside my office. And then, and then time enough to submit to the, in our Coastal Resources Commission, and to get the plan approved before next July. So here we are in the KAMA update process. Next slide, please. So here's a handy Gantt chart. We Gantt charted this all out in the beginning, and this is just a simplified version of it, of all of the tasks. Um, we, this line really should be in August, but we're here. And, and what we need, really need right now is, is more public input. We've had public meetings. Well, next slide, please. We'll go through. I'm skipping ahead of myself. And next slide. So so far, what we've done is, again, we're coming out of COVID and acknowledging that we also live in a digital world. So we're trying to provide opportunities, digital opportunities for feedback, as well as more traditional open houses and conversations and paper surveys, paper maps, too. So we've created a website. This is our in-house website that, that is the hub for all information, for, for meetings, for overview of what the planning process is. We have a vision statement form. I've been getting vision statements. Every time you enter a vision statement, it, it gets emailed right to me, and we are compiling them all. And this also has a link to map.social, which is an online, it, basically, it's in lieu of an online charrette, or in addition to a charrette process, where people add points to a map about, you know, flood hazards, or faulty intersections, or great places, or negative places in town. Next slide, please. Again, we did put out a survey. The survey is still open. We'll talk more about this in terms of how the planning board can get involved in the survey. The paper survey is available at Town Hall. It has been available at multiple tabling events, the Watermelon Festival and Sounds by the Sound. And I know that, that staff has also made it available, and I'm pretty sure that some, that you've seen this before, and you've been able to make it available as well. And again, we get, we get this, the online survey, and we get this information, we'll compile it together and make a, a report that will stand on its own to see the results of the summary, but also it influences all parts of the plan. Next slide, please. What we're working on right now, we have a draft that's not ready. It's just an in-process draft. But the existing and emerging conditions, which is what we're working on now, and it, it basically is the factual basis for the plan. It involves population, population projections, flood hazard areas, et cetera, but all of the demographics, employment demographics, different population. It explains census data and how it's used, and it has all of the information. We're basing it on the information that was in the past, your current KAMA plan, your adopted KAMA plan. And in the requirements, the very specific data requirements in KAMA, in the Coastal Area Management Act. And there are also other requirements in Chapter 160D. So we're making sure that all of, all of the information that needs to be in the existing and emerging conditions are in there. This will be published, posted on the website, and distributed. The planning board ideally will give input on this, too. Are there data points missing? Does something not make sense to you? Would you, you know, do you think something is misleading and we should take it out? All that feedback will be important from the planning board. Next slide, please. So just so far, we've had, we've had an input session on the UDO that ended up being more of an input session on the land use plan. I think the land use plan is a bit easier to, it's more accessible, because it's actually about your, your life, your house, your property. And so, but we've had a couple of these sessions. We've been at, as I said, the Watermelon Festival and Sounds by the Sound. And, and again, we're getting, you may have seen these flyers up and around. All of them have QR codes that lead back to the website. And, and we will continue to have more throughout, throughout the year. Next slide, please. Again, a lot of them, I'm repeating myself. This slide is basically redundant to the last slide. Next slide, please. Again, this is just an image of, that we're continually collecting vision statements. And this, we are, we are adapting to COVID. And, and I think, as we've all seen in different aspects of our life, just as we're seeing in the planning process, some parts of, you know, that we, some things we did to adapt to COVID, we're going to keep there. I think people are going to continue, a lot of people are going to continue to keep working from home. And again, and what we realized was that instead of attending public meetings to give a vision, we still love public meetings. Everybody loves meeting face-to-face and actually discussing. I think that's, that's positive in, in so many ways. But I think we'll always keep having online vision statements, because we're getting so many more and so many more thoughtful vision statements, because people are able to, on their own time, perhaps in their, in their own homes, sit down and really think about your vision for the town, and then submit that. So we found that that's been really successful so far. Next slide, please. And next slide, please. Then the next, the next thing is, um, the next thing is that we need to discuss, as a planning board, how you can be involved. And, and ideally, you will accept the mantle of acting as community liaison, not only filling out the survey and the map and the vision statement yourself, but then, if you could go to the next slide, please. I think I have it written down. Exactly. So, so basically, what we have is a, we have a 10% target. Sounds like a low number. I'd love to get, you know, 25% people involved in some way in the plan. But in order to reach 10%, we've just got numbers in a spreadsheet and are tracking how many people have been involved. But if we get, if each planning board member fills out the survey, fills out a vision statement and a map, either map.social application that I, that I showed you, or the paper map, and then find five people to fill out the survey, and find different people to provide a vision statement, and then put flyers in windows, and then also sit down and with people, ideally, it's not going to be the person you talk to every day, because you probably already know their opinions. But if you could, if each planning board member could find two different people to stay in touch with and talk at length about the planning process, their vision for the town, and then, and, and get that input, then I think we will be doing a good job of using your existing networks, your social, professional networks, to bring as much input as possible to the planning process. Next slide, please. I'm going to talk with my staff, who is making these really cheesy slides. Next slide, please. And again, in addition to all of the other, all of the other methods for input, again, we have the planning website. You can always email me, or also email the town manager, or go through, as we've discussed, actually go through your planning board chair to discuss, or to send us a feedback. And that's it for me. I'm sure there's a lot you want to discuss. That's, that is, that actually slide was hidden, in case anyone had questions, but it came out when I PDF'd it, so that.
Hi, Anne. Thank you very much for that information. Um, the planning board is prepared to start doing some community engagement. I had a couple of things set up. I was just waiting for the go-ahead to launch. And those will be opportunities for us to go directly to where the people are, like at Lowe's, at the gym, at any of our recreational areas, at the boat ramp, that type of thing. I do like the idea of taking these to the businesses, and maybe leaving them at the businesses, and then go back and collect them. You know, it was something I hadn't even thought of. So our target at this point is 250, but we want, we want more than that. What is our number at this point?
One second. I have everything but that open.
I think the last time we talked, we were like at 53. Are we, have we gotten?
No, we're better than that. So we have, um, let's, I can answer that question in just a minute. If you keep talking, I, I am going through files to open up the.
Yeah, you can get back to us on that. I'm just trying to understand.
We're, we're basically, in a nutshell, we're about halfway there.
Okay.
But, I mean, ideally, as I said, you know, we, we generally set 10% as a target of people to be, to participate. But in Cape Codderet, I think that there's a great potential to have, you know, far greater than 10%. I think, I think if the planning board took this on and, and went out and talked to people and distributed as many surveys, I really think that we could easily get to 25%, which would be great.
Yeah. So, so has the handoff occurred? Is this the handoff from the steering committee to us with the land use plan? I know we did that, basically did the handoff with the UDO at the last Board of Commissioners meeting. Have we done that with the land use plan now?
The Board of Commissioners is going to need to make that handoff. We went back and checked. Back in the spring, they voted 5-0 to designate the steering committee to handle the land use plan. So probably needs to be discussed at that upcoming September meeting for the Board of Commissioners.
You know, if they decide to keep realistically, it can come to the planning board, and we could use the steering committee as our community involvement.
Yeah, I don't see any, I don't see any reason why it can't continue to be a collaborative process. I mean, but just in terms of us leading that process, currently, it's still with the steering committee until said otherwise. If, if it is said otherwise, I'm not sure.
So, oh, I don't, I don't, I don't want to step on anybody's toes, and I, and I think it's important to, to take into consideration the wishes of the, the Board of Commissioners. That said, state law does place this responsibility in the lap of the planning board.
Right.
Every planning board takes that directive differently, you know, and it is okay to delegate to a steering committee. So, so again, that's in the, in the town, but there's no scenario in which the planning board is not involved.
Right. So I'm, I would, you know, I like a process. I thought, I thought our process was a little too squishy on the UDO. And, and we, I feel like we wasted a lot of resources in regard to, you know, contract hours, you know, calendar. So I would like to really understand the resources and put this plan together, so we're not, we're not wasting resources. And so I want to understand who the people are, money. I want to get a good understanding. I think we all need a good understanding of, of what your contract is. So we don't have expectations of you that are unrealistic. And we, you know, we just, you know, in one request, we, you know, we jumped so far out of scope, and, and we're not even aware of it. So I want, I want us to understand the existing contract. I also, I have a question about, when I was looking at the DCM website, I noticed that there are some grants available. Are we, are we taking advantage of any of the grants to do this? They were miniscule.
Yeah, so when we began this process, there wasn't any, it, it just depends on what's approved by the legislator. So, but since we're already in this process, I mean, we didn't really take advantage of those.
Okay.
But I know in the past, we have utilized that, maybe at this last, when they, 2007, when they did the land use plan, that might have been a grant at that point in time. But because we're already this far along in the process, we couldn't apply for the grant for something that we've already incurred expense on. So hopefully, it'll be around for the next iteration of the process, so.
Now, I know that we have to, we, we need certification from the Department of Environmental Quality. Um, my question is, must we also align with Codderet Counties? We lost Anne.
No, sorry. I put it on, I apologize. I put it on mute and somehow turned my video off. So, go back to your previous, I want to hit this comment, but to your previous comment about scope. I'm happy to distribute the contract and the scope, and I appreciate, I appreciate you saying you want to stay within the scope. The planning board involvement is one way, I think, to, to expand. Well, I think this, let me send you the scope and, and then, yeah.
Yeah. I'm, I think, I honestly, I think everybody on the board would be able to understand, you know, what we, once we see that, you know, how we can stay in scope. So we understand what do we have to do, and maybe some other resources that we need to find outside of the planning board, and outside of some of it. So I just kind of want to understand what that is right up front. I'm, I'm sorry?
I didn't see anything.
I'm sorry, Paxton is talking. I'm sorry, Paxton, what do you want to tell us?
I said, could you just go through it briefly for us now, please, Anne?
The scope?
Yes, please.
And sure, sure. Just give me a moment to pull up that email. I've got it here in my emails.
Yeah. So I noticed that Codderet County started their KAMA Land Use Plan update in 2000, December of 2019. When I went to the DEQ website, it says it's in review, but it's, it's still the old one from 2009. Should we be working our land use plan within theirs? Is there any reason?
I think they, they, it would, it would not hurt to, to make sure, to stay in contact, and also to, to, we want to make sure that they're not in conflict. But that said, the town doesn't have to, I mean, the town has chosen to make their own plan. That is, if, if the town didn't want to make their own plan, I think that decision was made long before 2007, but, but there is, there is leeway there. There, there are different and very specific recommendations. The, in my opinion, the better, the best plans make very specific recommendations about how to achieve. about how to achieve land use goals, right? And so because you have different, you have a different budget, you have different zoning, you have all of that. It, it makes sense to have your own plan that is targeted very specifically with recommendations. So, you know, change the whatever zoning district to, you know, require, whatever you want to, whatever exact specific recommendations. You can't do that if it's, if it's, does that make sense? Like they're just, they're, they're different localities with different ordinances.
So...
What, you cut out, sorry.
County is ahead of us.
That's okay. It doesn't matter. I don't know why that speaker's not working. Do you have to turn it on?
Can you not hear me?
I can hear you now, but I couldn't hear you before.
Okay. I'm, so the other thing I think is important for us to do is to identify each of our roles. And I think that's true for the land use plan and also for what we have left on the UDO. You know, I know in a, in a perfect world, we would have done the land use plan first for the vision and then written the UDO as the implementation plan. And, and kind of, you know, we're a little backwards on that. So, but I still think there's a lot, there's a lot of reasons why we would still want to identify the principles, identify, you know, edit teams, review teams, substantive change teams, style team. So I think it's important that we still, we still do that. And, and that we develop a schedule.
So we have, I'm actually going to, I'm sending this, we're following the scope that I'm going to send to Zach right now. And so he can hopefully, he can hopefully display it on the screen for you. And then you'll know what we've been following. I think this is great, Susan. Thanks for trying to offer this clarity.
And I, as, as we go through this process, eventually, we're going to have a document rather than just feeding you input. At some point, we're going to start developing this document. And I think it's important that we, we develop some type of... Even if it's just, so we understand what we're changing from...
I'm hearing 10% of your words.
Is that better? Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Keep turning away from the mic because I'm trying to look at you when I'm speaking.
Okay, okay.
So anyway, that's where we're at. I, I think it's important that we get a good plan together. That does not have to be done in a meeting. It's very, it's, I think it's easier, honestly, to just distribute, you know, some ideas and, you know, figure out who's who. I also think we need some, some defined communication channels. I don't know that I want everybody going to you because what we lose then the collaboration among ourselves. If, if Cam, you, I don't know what he's saying to you and it could be valuable to all of us.
I totally and completely agree. And also, if you, if you call me and tell me one thing and another planning board member calls me and tells me another thing and a board of, you know, I, I don't know what to do with that information when I get competing directives. So you're exactly right.
Yeah, that's why I say I think it's important that we have, we, we identify what everybody's role is, who are the principals, who can make a change, who's just doing reviews, who's doing editing. So, you know, we're, so we're not getting caught up, you know, kind of in that mess. I think we could, I think we could pull this off with, you know, with some organization and discipline and, and make it a lot less painful.
I love that. That's great. Zach, it's on page 24. And Susan, as he scrolls to that, one of the things that you, you had just asked about, eventually it'll become a document, right? Yes, it will. And we'll see in the scope, what we, what we do is, and we talked about this in the UDO about the way I work in an iterative process, as in I'm never going to create the whole thing back here and then just give it to you. I, I want to, you know, we created a table of contents, the steering committee reviewed, then we populated, then we, you know, iterative process. We go back and forth and each time it gets a little, it gets a little better to everyone's satisfaction, but it never is just like a wipe you over the head with the final product. So, so in each, that's what I was going to say, each phase has its own deliverable. So for example, when we close the survey, we'll create a report of the survey results so that you could just go to the website or however you attain it, obtain it. It's just to see, okay, these are what all of the people who filled out the survey, these are, this is their response, et cetera, the existing conditions report. All of that will be their own separate deliverables, but then they'll all be, same with vision, goals, objectives, strategies, and then they'll all be combined for the final document.
Okay.
So again, Zach, if you want to scroll through, we've had initial meetings. We're sort of circling back to planning for community engagement. Sometimes it doesn't happen exactly as we write in the proposal. Reviewing previous plans, we've done mapping and data analysis is, is pretty much done. We should, we've got a couple more things. We talked about, talked to Zach about that draft document and we have all the data. We just need to add the narrative at this point. We've created the website, QR codes, all of that. And again, this is where we are right now. We're fine and publish the report of existing and the emerging conditions. We're a little bit behind in this. And the survey has been out. We've kept the survey open for a really long time. And hopefully, we'll get another push with your involvement. We'll get another push to the survey, get a lot more surveys in and then close that. And, and for example, you can see the, the proposal says using a survey, a program such as Survey Monkey, while it is indeed very much on Survey Monkey. So we'll close that after we get enough input and then make a summary and post it on the website. Community forums, we have, we have had three attempts. I'm just going to be transparent. We've had three attempts at community forums. We had one that was about the UDO and the land use plan and several of you were there. In my opinion, it, it should have been more robustly attended. And then we also, in hoping to get more people, we had a table at the Sounds by the Sound and then we had a table at the Watermelon Festival, which actually was very well attended. We got a lot of feedback there. But I think there need to be, there need to be more opportunities for outreach and, and we can wait until we get further along in the process so people have something to re, to react to. But, but again, getting the vision statement and that, that just very basic dream for the town is really important to help guide the whole process. So again, that, that goes back to the push of getting, getting you all involved. And, and we haven't started, again, sorry, June, July. We need to, we need to push forward, but I'm not, I'm not particularly concerned about the exact months that we put in, in the proposal. But we have not, we need more public engagement before we feel comfortable moving on to the vision, you know, actually establishing the vision and goals. We need, we need to hear back from you all more. We need to hear back from the public more before we can come up with that list.
To do that. So I will, I'll get with Zach and we'll figure out, you know, at what point we could start it. You know, if it's tomorrow, we'll start tomorrow.
Oh, I think tomorrow.
Yeah. If we want to wait until after, you know, until after the next commissioners meeting. I, I don't want to wait anymore. I just don't want to expend, you know, the resource of the calendar. You know, I, so... I think, does anybody else have any questions about, about what we're, what we're about ready to launch on and why we're doing it? What this, the land use plan is going to do for us? Okay. Yeah, Anne, I, I think, I think we're all, you know, fully understand what we're getting ourselves into and I think we're motivated to do it.
That's music to my ears. I'm so happy. That's good.
Yeah. Can we revisit the UDO for a second?
Sure.
Okay. I'm, I'm going to give you, I'm going to give you my, and I know Zach is going to be behind me saying, you know, please don't do this.
A little bit worried, but...
So...
Did you want me to go to the, she also has the UDO scope of work. And this is the, there's still more in the land use plan. Do you want to come back to that later and jump over to UDO or?
No, let's get through this. I thought, I'm sorry, I thought we were done. Yes, let's get through this and then we'll go to the scope on the UDO. That would be helpful.
Well, it's, it sounds like in terms of an actionable next step, I love that you're, you're, I love that you're eager to start on this public outreach. And I also love that, that you want to talk about, even if it's just in a memo and if you guys want to talk about who's responsible for what. And, and that's very much something that you can do amongst yourself in terms of the outreach. Just keep me posted and, and, and I will keep, especially keep me posted about the process, but about the numbers and then we'll keep tracking it. And ideally, we'll far exceed our target. But as of right now, we're about halfway to the target.
Okay. Where are we at with, with the document management system? How, are we going to use SharePoint? What is your idea for that as, as we go forward?
For the land use plan?
Yeah.
No, I think that it's better to, to have us take, to take your input and, and then incorporate that into the document. I thought that having everybody making comments in the document when, as we tried to do for the UDO, it was a little bit of an unwieldy process. And, and if it's at the end, if, for the final document, it may be that we need to find some other platform. But I don't, I don't think SharePoint is, is our platform.
Okay. I'm, well, we are, we are going to have to figure that out at some point. I guess we can...
You're, you're talking about comments, comments for review of the final document?
Well, I, I think what, in, in my, we, we're going to have people who review the document and make comments and then we're going to have people who can actually edit that document and make a change, right? We're not just going to send a bunch of comments to you and let you make all, all the changes, right? We're going to have to just...
No, I think you would send all your comments to me and have us make the changes. I think sending a raw document, especially an InDesign file out and having a bunch of people edit it, I think that's asking for disaster.
That's what I'm saying. We don't want a bunch of people editing. A lot of people can review, but not a lot of people editing. Yeah.
Right. We, we can do the editing.
Okay.
We, we don't, we want to make sure that there's not a person with a, a personal motivation and we never want to question that someone with a personal motivation has made changes to a document.
Well, absolutely. That's why it's important to be able to track who made, who made that, that change. And that, that's why I think that's important, that we track that.
Well, I think it's also important to, to have comments and not every comment becomes the change. Sometimes comments are conflicting.
Yes. And somebody has to de-conflict that.
Yes.
Who is that?
That is our job.
Okay. I'm good.
Oh, okay. I wasn't sure if you were talking and the microphone cut out.
No.
Okay. Zach, do you want...
Anything else on the land use plan scope of work? Or do you want me to pull up the UDO scope of work?
I, I don't have anything else to say except that we're still following the scope, which is the scope that is, you know, in our signed contract.
Just trying to pull up the timeline so everybody can see that a little better.
Okay, so this, what are, what are you showing me? The, the scope?
This is still the land use plan. Don't we want to go to the UDO?
Yeah, do, are we ready to transition over to the UDO now?
Well, I, I think, so we still got to wrap up the UDO, right? And I, I kind of want to get this in the can, you know, so we can move on to the land use plan.
I agree.
Our, our brains are full as, you know, as far as, I'm speaking for the entire board when I say this is, you know, this is new information and our brains are probably full with land use plan and we can revisit more information as we get to it. You know, you could even send what you're projecting up here. You can go ahead and send it out to us and everybody, you know, can review it. And if we have questions from there, we can start, you know, kind of putting our questions together between meetings.
About the scope?
About, about anything, anything related to the land use plan.
Okay. So I'm going to send you the, I'll send you the scope, which is what you're looking at. The, I can send you the PowerPoint from this evening.
Okay.
And a link to the website, which has all that information.
I was just asking, can we, could we move, like, we can read this stuff and get up to speed on it. You know, like I don't want to take Anne's time reading a document to me.
Right, right. Yes, exactly.
So I'm, let's go ahead and maybe move on while we have her here. So she can tell us things. I'll certainly get up to speed on this, this literature. I'll read that. I don't want to waste Anne's time.
Does it sound good, Anne? You could just get this out to us?
Yep. I'm just making a note to send you the scope, the PowerPoint and a link to the website. Okay, so the UDO, we basically, if you could just scroll through it, Zach. We had initial meetings. I presented at the Board of Commissioners. The steering committee was formed. We conducted stakeholder interviews, had public input sessions and a survey. We went a little bit off scope because there was no stakeholder, I mean, excuse me, steering committee in this. So there was a lot that went on that was not in the scope. And...
Can, can we stop here for a second? What, what I'm seeing here is in regard to how to draft UDO and...
I'm sorry, you're cutting out again.
I'm looking at up here is that... I'm looking at up here is that draft UDO, and should, that we should also have additional changes to Landy's.
I, I agree. The, the scope, the Steering Committee changed the UDO scope of work quite a bit, and it changed, it changed the, it changed the timeline. That said, we do, we, yeah, this is in the scope. We don't, we don't have the recommend. And again, this doesn't mean we're going to hold the UDO up to do, you know, nor, normally what would happen is you create a Landy's Plan. That Landy's Plan is very specific recommendation. That's not what this is, that's not what this means.
Okay, so what, I was not aware that the Steering Committee took you outside scope. I can understand that it happened because I was in those meetings. But, so I just want to reiterate one more time. Please, please control us as far as remaining in scope. You know, let us know.
Okay, I will, I will do my best. If, if we can all make an effort, then that would be, that would be helpful. So, but, and speaking of, I'm glad that we are reviewing this together and talking because I frankly, I don't see how this is going to be possible. And again, we were, when, back when we were strangers, we wrote a proposal, and this is, this, I'm just going to be honest. This was me trying to bring back the overlap because everything, everything in me feels like the Landy's Plan should be done first. So I was hoping that there would be enough overlap that we could sort of catch it and make some changes. Couple of things happened. A, the timeline is, it, you know, they sort of moved apart, and also the Steering Committee made a decision, which I think, knowing what I know now, is the right decision, to not amend zoning districts. So, in full transparency, this is what I wrote, again, in a proposal, but I, I don't see that this is a possibility right now. I don't think we should hold up this UDO, which puts you in compliance with state code. I don't think we should hold it up to, to go down the road with form-based elements.
What? So, so let me get back to what I was going to say earlier, that I think that was, was going to probably have a bit more. So, this is my recommendation moving forward. I'm, I think that we should not spend, expand any more resources on the UDO until we are done with the Landy's Plan. Then we can come.
You cut out again.
So, I, I think that we should on the UDO until after we complete the Landy's Plan. And once we do that, then we can go ahead and update the UDO exactly as it's written on the board right now. Does that make sense?
I think, I think what, my recommendation would be to adopt the UDO as we have, and this is stuff we've talked about in the Steering Committee, to adopt the UDO. And again, this proposal, we, okay. We want to figure out how to stick to the scope that, that we established. That said, I don't think that we should, I, the town needs to be in compliance with state statutes legally. That's very important.
So.
There could be an entire separate project that, that has to do with creating form-based elements, and, and I regret, I'm looking at this.
I'm sorry, are we, can you repeat that?
Yeah, I, I think that what this is talking about, and this was my, I, I'm just being totally honest. I wrote this in a proposal. We should have, if I had known what I know now about the process, I would not have added form-based elements in the, in the zoning ordinance. Or, I think that another project might need to happen down the road, and this is what we talked about in the Steering Committee, that their objective, as we outlined it, was to come into compliance with state code and to make the development process less onerous. I think adding form-based elements, I, and I also know more about, I, I know much more about Cape Cod right now, and I don't know that form-based elements are appropriate in, in the town necessarily right now.
So, you're saying is exactly what I have here on my paper, which is make it readable and get us into state compliance?
Yeah.
So, so I think we're in agreement with, with how we go forward regarding the UDO.
Yeah, what I just, I, what I don't think is, I think we've reached, we've reached the, the point where, where we have done what we accomplished, not necessarily in this proposal that I made up, but in what we established that was in the RFP and that, and that the Steering Committee agreed to. And, and you have that before you in the UDO, and, and I think it's important to, to make a recommendation and, and have the Board of Commissioners approve to, to close this gap during which the town is potentially open to lawsuits.
Let, let me, let me, let me try to explain why I'm making this point. The team are having these drafts make, you know, you know, making rames of comments. And as they're, and we're, it seems like we have moved on, you know, those, those comments have been overcome by the events of yet another draft. And we're so close to the end now. I just don't want the team to expend their time going over this document when we're not going to make any more of these kind of changes. We're, we're pretty much, in other words, where, where we're at.
Where, where we're at. There, there are a couple of things. We've gotten some, some substantive comments about some small changes that will, will accomplish the same objectives. For example, it was pointed out recently that one of the things that, that, one of the small development processes that happens in the town is, you know, just the subdivision of one, of one lot into two. And many, many localities use that as an administrative process. Cape Cod has that whole process going before the, the Planning Board and the Board of Commissioners. So, for example, that would be a small change that would make a big difference to a lot of people and make, make life easier in the town.
No, that, that's an administrative process.
Right, well, right. So, so what, what, since I've gotten these comments, since we've put out the draft, so there are a couple of other little things like that that are, you know, it takes us, it takes us two minutes to find and make this change, and it takes, you know, one sentence and saves many, 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 many hours for people who live in the town. Like, that's a kind of small change I think we can still make. Amending the zoning districts at this point, I think is, is not, not practical.
So, so I just kind of, I just, so we can manage, you know, your expectations of us. What is it you ex, what is it, because we're your resource. What is it that you need from us on this draft UDO? What would you like us to do with the, with the draft we received today? What would you like us to do with that? What can we give back to you?
I would like to have a conversation and make sure that you're, that you understand special use permits and, and, and we're all on the same page. And then, and then ideally, the Planning Commission gives a favorable, excuse me, Planning Board gives a favorable recommendation to the Board of Commissioners, and then they're able to proceed. And then that process, we can, we can wrap up that process and focus on the Landy's Plan.
Okay. I, I think we're, I think we're in agreement here. Are you on board with that, with where we're, with what we're talking about regarding the UDO?
Yeah, so I think, you know, we had talked about, was it August 13th? As a timeframe to get comments, and I know that there were some additional comments that have come in. I think to the extent that those comments were substantive and could be included, I think Anne has, has done that. And if there's any outlier ones, I think we'll do that as well. And then she, for the September Planning Board meeting, to formally ask for either a favorable or unfavorable recommendation of the draft UDO, and then have it on the Board of Commissioners' agenda that following week for adoption.
Okay.
So, I do not understand and have not received enough information on the special use permit as proposed, and I understood we were going to have training on that?
Well, well, she kind of gave us a little primer on it, but yeah, I think we probably need, we probably need.
We should discuss.
Go ahead, Anne.
I, I think that we should discuss, and this is our opportunity to discuss that. I mean, the, the, from, from comments at your last meeting, and, and, you know, I have Barb, I wasn't able to be there, but I have Barbara's notes, and then I, I also, from your comments, Susan at the Board of Commissioners' meeting, I was, I was prepared to talk about special use permits. And, and again, and Paxton had sent me some questions, some questions earlier, and do you want me to address that, Paxton? Or do you want to, is this an appropriate venue in your opinion?
I'm sorry. If you will please speak more slowly for me. I can always understand you.
Okay, sorry, I do speak fast. You had a question about, you had a question about special use permits and how moving some uses in the table of permitted and special uses from, from permitted, from by right uses to special use permit. Right? And, and on the face of that, I understand why that would seem like we're actually making it more complicated. But in, in reality, because we moved site plan review to an administrative approval, that means that there are many things that, currently, all site plans need to go before the Planning Board and the Board of Commissioners. And that's what we've heard over and over again is onerous. And that, and that, and that people don't want to come up with full set of plans for initial approval by the Planning Board. And so what the special use permit does is have most uses go, A, to the UDO administrator instead of the Planning Board and Board of Commissioners to ensure that the application is complete.
Now, my question, yeah, excuse me. My question is, is that residential and commercial or only commercial?
Only, so residential was exempt, one and two family was exempt from the site plan review process? And now it's simply a permitted use that will go through administrative review?
So that's adding a layer that we don't now have.
You're saying that?
Yeah.
Residential zoning permits will still, they'll just go through the same process they've been doing. They'll just get a zoning permit. Yes, yeah. Yeah, so that'll, that'll stay the same. What this does is, I mean, if it's a permitted use, it's going, it's going through internal review and approval. If it's a special use, then it goes to the process, going to the board. And that's where that table of permitted and special uses is important. The special uses are those uses that are potentially controversial or have significant impacts on adjacent properties, on the character of the town. That's really where those special use permits, that designation is important. And any use that's not listed in the table is automatically deemed to be a special use and have to go through the special use permit process. So if there's something not currently in the table, it accounts for that and saying it's a special use by default, which is helpful, so.
One from, if somebody wanted to develop something that wasn't in the UDO, it wouldn't have to go to the Board of Commissioners to get the text amendment, amendment to get it added. Is that correct?
Yes.
I guess what Anne says on that, sorry.
Wait, what were you going to say, Zach?
Uh, I don't, I mean, I don't know if you would need to go through and do a text amendment to add it. Because it, well, I guess there'd be two options. You could, the developer could go through and they could request a text amendment to add it as a permitted use to the table of permitted and special uses. Or it could just be a special use, and they go through the special use permit process, and they wouldn't have to do a text amendment because it's a special use by default. That, I, that'd be my reading on it, but.
You're, you're correct. Both of those things are possible. However, I, I would recommend just having, if any new use that is not in the ordinance now, I would recommend it just going through a special use permit process. I'm so sorry. I've listened to this all day. I hope you can't hear.
Anne, do you live near a racetrack?
I actually do live near Richmond International Raceway, but I work on Broad Street in Richmond, which is very loud. So, I would not recommend amending your zoning ordinance for one use because, for example, let's say, let's say you need a racetrack, just pressing an example. It may be, not all racetracks are created equal. So if you just were, you actually give away some power and open up to wild cards when you just simply say, "We permit racetracks." When instead, if that racetrack went, went as a special use permit, there is, as long as the, the criteria of the, you know, the findings of fact in the quasi judicial process there, as long as they're met, there's leeway of going back and forth and saying, "Okay, we approve this special use with the, with, with, within these parameters." Whereas if you just amended the zoning ordinance, you don't have that ability for oversight and review of each individual project. So the idea of a special use permit process is, is to allow flexibility while still maintaining control and having public input. Does that make sense?
I was just reviewing on page 81, one of the notes that I made, Anne. And where you have, page 81, dry cleaning and laundry, less than 1,000 square feet and self-service. Well, I don't know that that explains completely that our ordinance now allows only for pickup and drop-off. No chemicals, no chemicals, and I think that's very important. We all know what Camp Lejeune is going through right now, and we certainly don't want chemicals involved in our commercial areas, so.
So, we actually didn't change that. Let me go, you, you're in page 81?
Yes, about midway. Yeah, right, right, right. But it doesn't specify, even in the present ordinance, but the intent was no chemicals, no dry cleaning, only drop-off and pickup.
Okay, so that is, that's an example of a change that, that we could make that would be very small.
Right, thank you.
So, and again, we didn't change.
Understand.
We, we didn't change that, but that's an example of something that we could. If it's very well reasoned, everyone agrees, and it's a small change, we can still make that change. Is that in your? All right. I think what needs to happen is there's a number of, number of small changes that, that need to be made, and maybe that's one of them. So, yeah, let me, let me address that. Because Paxton, when I look at, when I look at the final draft that we sent out, page 81 has got R200, single family.
Yeah, I think if you're looking at the PDF, it'd be on page 70 of the PDF document, 70 out of 233.
Thank you.
No problem.
Dry cleaning and laundry, less than 1,000 square feet and self-service? And you're saying, but no chemicals? Thank you.
That was the intent.
So I actually don't think we would change it here. I think we change it in the definitions.
Yeah, I, I don't think you're going to get, uh, you know, like a dry cleaning process in 1,000 square feet anyway. These days, they send it out, well, you know, so you, you know, you pick up anyway, so.
My only point was, uh, we could add one word, pickup, pickup station, and make it very clear that it's not to involve chemicals and dry cleaning in our town. Unless we all want chemicals going into our town, that's all.
Did you call it chemical-free dry cleaning and laundry, less than 1,000 square feet and self?
You could just call it pickup.
Dry cleaning, pickup, and laundry.
Right.
If, if there's consensus among the planning board, then I see no reason why we can't make that change.
This, it's a small thing, but. I thought it was important. Would you call for a consent? Among the planning boards, I mean, there is consensus.
Yeah, I, I think, does everybody agree we have consensus on that? But I think there's probably a number of different things. If we, if we start picking apart this, there's a lot of, there's a lot of changes that we're going to make. That's what I wanted to ask Zach.
Susan, Susan, you're right, you're right.
Yeah, I, I kind of don't want to get into.
Keep going forever.
Yeah, um, so Zach, my, my idea is that we would, we would, we would take this deliverable, and then any small changes that we, that we want to make from the planning board to the U D O administrator, and then eventually to the, to the Board of Commissioners, we could do on our own outside of Summit.
Yes, yeah, I mean, yeah, if there's changes like that, I mean, unless there, I mean, unless, I'd say kind of this evening would kind of be the cutoff if we do know of those things. I mean, and correct me if I'm wrong, Ann, I mean, now, like, while we're all together, this is the time, if you want to throw something out that there is agreement, it's something everybody can get on board with, we could probably, but this, tonight would probably be the cutoff for any of that. So, um, you know, moving forward, I would agree, it'd be after this process and once it's adopted and everything, so. But definitely, that, that might be something to look at too, Ann, in the, in the definition section. I'm just thinking from the staff perspective, like, 10 years down the road, you know, if they're going to know if a dry cleaner comes along, um, it might be helpful to have that in the definition section about it being chemical-free in addition to that pickup aspect. I think the more, you know, specific it is, is probably beneficial, so.
Yeah, and I think also.
10 years down the road, you just never know. Somebody's reading it, you want them to be able to understand whether.
Well, we could also build into the land use plan because it talks about it, there's, you know, one of the parts of that is environmental. Um, that's one of the things that we could talk about is that we, you know, in the land use plan, or our vision of the town is that we would have chemical-free commercial district.
Yeah.
You know, so, um, so if something did come up, we would have something to do, because that's really what we want, right? We want to be able to go back to that land use plan to guide us in what that U D O should tell us to do.
Yeah.
How we implement it.
I think that is good feedback on the land use plan, like you're saying, to say, you know, we, you know, desire businesses in the commercial district that are chemical-free, that, you know, don't create the hazard of spills or environmental contamination, especially due to the sensitive coastal environment or something to that effect. That would be a good policy to have in there, because that'd be a good thing to be able to.
And, and I think, haven't we gotten some feedback already regarding, you know, being mindful of our, our coastal environment?
Oh, yeah, we haven't gotten anything about, about chemicals yet, but we've gotten a lot of, you know, we need to reduce impervious surface, we need to pay attention to where we are, we need to, yeah.
I'm, so can we, can we just get back to land use permits real quick? I mean, I mean, rather, special use permits, because I just want to, I want to wrap my head around it, and I want everybody else to have their head wrapped around it.
Agreed.
Um, let, so let's say that something is not covered in the permitted uses.
Yep.
Then it would be, uh, that would be an opportunity for us to entertain a special use permit, correct?
Yes.
Now, step me through how, how that happens. Does, um, I guess I should ask the.
Zach, Zach, can you, um, can you navigate to the special use permit section? I'll tell you where it is. It is.
I'm talking about the, the planning board itself, us as a body.
The planning board itself? That, um.
So I, I guess what I'm asking is, how do we, how do we determine the yes or the no?
So right now, especially, the way it's drafted right now, the special use permit process goes directly to the Board of Commissioners. It's possible, you, it can, there are a number of different ways that a town can treat a special use, and, and one is to just go to the Board of Commissioners, one is to go to the Board of Zoning Adjustment, which it doesn't sound like anybody is, uh, keen on, um, and one is to go, one is to have, um, there are no, there are a number of different ways. I think if you have a public hearing at both, at both Planning Commission and Board of Commissioners, you're going back to making the process that onerous. Um, one of the things that, right now, it just goes straight to the Board of Commissioners. One of the things that, that I've been thinking about, we might want to add, is, um, that the Planning Commission makes a formal recommendation to the Board of Commissioners, but without a public hearing that would require everyone to get their, um, their experts at two meetings. Two public hearings, I mean, with all of the notice and legal requirements.
I, I would think the Board of Commissioners would expect us to provide them with an endorsement before making a decision on that. Wouldn't, wouldn't you expect that?
I know it varies from municipalities on how they approach it. I mean, some just have the Board of Commissioners, as Ann mentioned, some have a, the Board of Adjustment actually handles those special use permits. It really varies from one municipality to another how they approach it. So it's really, this stage in the process, I mean, it could be whatever the, you know, whatever planning board or the Board of Commissioners' vision is for that. From a streamlined process, if it goes straight to the Board of Commissioners, it's definitely streamlined. Um, from an input process, it's probably less input, you know, with the planning board not having any level of review before it goes straight to the Board of Commissioners, so.
Let me ask the opposite question. If we were the, if we, the planning board were to have that given to us as a special use permit request, what would be, what would we be endorsing? Because it wouldn't be in the U D O, and that's really our guidance, so we would just.
That's where Susan was going. What scope of review does this committee evaluate for the state of the recommended special use? That would be the endorsement that goes upstairs, but we don't have those guidelines.
Yeah, it really, and, and the, the land use plan should help us make that endorsement. You know, we should have, that should be our guideline.
That's, that's entirely, entirely true, Susan.
Susan, it sounds like the, if we're just using the land use plan, we're using some, it's somewhat subjective, it's not as detailed as the U D O, and that's fine. Um, we can use our brains and think about what that special use is and make that determination, and then send it up to the board? I don't know what the next level is. Yeah, the Board of Commissioners, yeah. So they're not just getting it raw, they've already had us look at it.
Susan is looking for, uh, something that's repeatable and consistent.
Process.
And, and if we just use our brains, you know, one day, our brain's going to say one thing, next week, it's going to say something different.
The understanding, um, I thought that special uses, special, sorry, where is it? Special use permits are outside general guidelines anyway. There are that exceptions to the rule that we have to rule on, we have to think about.
They are, but if you look, if you look at the language of the special use permit, Zach, will you scroll down? There, there are findings of fact, and, um, the applicant has to prove certain things. If you keep, keep going down, it, it is not a totally, that's another thing that we heard in the beginning, was that people feel like there is, um, that decisions, land use decisions are subjec-, there, there it is, Zach. The, we're trying to remove subjectivity or arbitrary and capriciousness as the law refers. We're trying to remove that from the process. So what is, what this language is trying to do is to say, we're going to consider these, and if the applicant can prove that all of these standards are met, that it's not going to be noxious, that it's not going to impede the development, that it's not going to, you know, endanger public safety, et cetera. So it, but, but that, but that doesn't get to say, you know, if it's a, let's say it's a store, um, let's say it's a retail store of, I don't know, I'm making it up, cotton candy, the terrible example. The point is, the, the, the planning board, or, or, I'm going to go back to the review process, but whoever's making the decision would, um, would say, okay, it doesn't matter if I like cotton candy or not. I, in fact, hate cotton candy, but the applicant has proved that it will not injure the value of adjoining property, it's consistent with the adopted plans, um, and therefore we have to approve it, that we have to approve it. It doesn't matter what you think of the use. It could be a, I don't know, name something that you hate and you don't want in your town, like, it, like, you have, it's going to have to, um, I, the way I said, whatever you hate and you don't want in your town, like that, um, that was too, too, um, flippant. But as long as the applicant can prove that they meet the measure of this ordinance, then it needs to be approved. Doesn't matter if you don't like the color of the building.
So the land use plan would give us the overall direction we'd want to go, but we'd need the U D O to ask the questions about whether there's a violation.
Yes, and the land use plan would give you, and, and again, it says it needs to be consistent with the adopted plans, right? So, so if the adopted plan says, we can't have no, no, you know, we have to have reduced, let's say the adopted plan says, we have a goal of reducing impervious surface by X amount in the town over the next 20 years, right? And these are very good reasons for doing that. And then a use comes forward, and this cotton candy shop has, you know, 100% of the, um, of the parcel is impervious surface. It's just all, all paved over in the plans. The planning board or the, again, let's get back to approvals, but the, the approving body would have every right to say, absolutely not, we will not approve this special use permit with the amount of impervious surface that it has right now. But you, does that make sense? Because you're referring to the plan, and the plan specifically says we need to reduce impervious surface.
I just think that the Board of Commissioners has an expectation of the planning board that we will dig into this information for them.
And, and, and I think that, that, I think that's good feedback. It's the feedback that, that frankly, I was expecting, and, and my recommendation would be to amend this draft language and say that the planning board will make an official recommendation, and it's going to need to have a time, a time parameter, like all of the other decisions in this language has. The planning board will make a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners.
I was, I was against it, but I, I agree with that.
Yeah, I, I think, I think there has to be some, some body, that bodies us, that, that, that can, can make sure that we're being consistent, uh, with our decision-making process, and, or I should say our endorsement process, uh, because the decision is left up to the Board of Commissioners. Uh, and, and we have to have a way that we do it, so we can do it the same, so we have a, a repeatable process. I, I think that's important, but I absolutely think that the Board of Commissioners has an expectation that we can provide them with a technical endorsement.
Okay, then we're going to add that language.
Does the, is this, I guess 160D, does it require, I mean, I know where it lies now, but is it required that a statement of consistency is adopted, um, like a planned statement of consistency for special use permits, or is that only for text amendments and other things that come through?
Um, that, can we scroll through and see if that's in the language? I know I checked all this.
Because an idea would be, an idea would be for the planning board to, on these special use permits, reach a statement of consistency or inconsistency as it pertains to the land use plan, and that would be what would be provided to the Board of Commissioners, but that would allow the planning board to dive into, is this consistent or inconsistent with the adopted land use and comprehensive plan?
Yeah, I think, I think that's better language. Yes.
And that could be a good opportunity to weigh in. If it's something that doesn't fit into what, you know, is in that plan, then that's a good opportunity to articulate that in a formalized statement that goes to the Board of Commissioners. That would be my sort of thoughts on it.
So can I get, can I get a thumbs up from everybody who, so we can get consensus on this? Okay, terrific.
Sounds like a plan.
Okay.
Okay, and it may be that, um, that the statement of consistency that was added for 160D in the planning board, um, in the planning board duties and procedures, that that would, that that would apply to any recommendation. But of, of course, we can still put it in, but back to your question, I'm looking at 160D right now, and, and it doesn't, it doesn't say that, um, that you have to have a statement of consistency per se, um, but it, it is entirely in character with everything else that's in the statute. Hi, Mr. King, I just recognized you in the back.
Anybody have anything else? Where are we on time? Uh, Paxton?
Yes, thank you. Uh, I just want to point out, I'm not claiming any disability, but I only got my written copy of the draft on Friday. I went through it completely Saturday and Sunday and made my comments. I've given a copy to Susan. Uh, I'll be glad to share them with all the planning board members. Uh, and I, I also want to receive a copy of the draft, please, in writing for the land use plan, and anything that comes in, I'd like a printed copy, please. And one of my comments was, I think the planning board should have a budget for such things, because I may not be the only one that just can't scroll through on my computer and retain it the way I can with a piece of paper. Thank you, I have an endorsement here. But thank you very much. Uh, and I would like to ask about my, my comments that Susan only received today, and, and do, by all means, pass them on and share them with whomever is appropriate, Susan, but, but some of them are typos, some of them are substantive issues from me. Thank you.
And also, you mentioned typos. Um, I was going through the document again today, and there's some spacing and font issues that we will, of course, take care of in a final homeover.
So our last, whatever comments we provide to you will not be regarding spelling, style, naming conventions. Those are all things we can do on our own, right?
If you, if you see a misspelling, please let me know.
Yeah, and anything substantive tonight that, you know, I just think this, I, I know the desire to move it along and everything, so I think, you know, if there is anything though that's out there tonight, that's a good opportunity to, to state that, so that, you know, while we're all together as a group, that's, you know, kind of the best time to do so. If not, then, you know, if it's spelling and other minor things like Ann says, I think they can correct that. But if it's anything else that might have been missed, that substantive nature, probably a good opportunity to.
One of the things that I am concerned about and have been concerned about from the beginning of this is that. of this is that there will, there's going to be a lot of changes in this U D O that, from, from the Code of Ordinance. And I, I have an expectation that the Board of Commissioners will, will, will ask what changed. And we don't have that mapping that, that, you know, that we would normally have, you know? And again, I'm not talking about changing happy to plan. I'm, I'm talking about, you know, real changes, whether it's zoning or anything. I think we should, we should have that. And I, I think it's too late to get it now.
Anne has a running list. I think she's going to put a memo together that kind of summarizes some of the big changes. Correct me if I'm, I'm wrong on that, Anne, but I, I think she does have something put together that, to that effect.
Yeah, well, we, we do have a memo outlining the, the large changes and, and the small changes are in that draft document. Every, every paragraph is labeled, this is as in the existing ordinances, this is new language. That's why we had the blue and red, the blue and red draft. And that blue and red draft not only had, you know, the blue and red, as in blue is new and red is existing, it had, every change was struck through and highlighted if it, something was removed. It was underlined and highlighted if everything was, if, whatever was added. And, and, and there, there were comments on the side explaining why each change was made. Right? You're looking for more of a map than that?
I, at this point, I, I don't, at this point, I, I don't think, I, I think what we need is, is too late to get. But I think we should keep in mind that, that we need it. I, I do think we need to have something mapped that says this, any, any big change that we made. We should say, this is what it was and this is what it is now, so that we can present that to the Board of Commissioners.
Now, that I, that I agree with. And, and I would imagine that would be a, a presentation.
Okay.
Well, Susan, with your indulgence, I have two issues that have not been reviewed simply because there hasn't been an opportunity for you to review them and, and to review them. But I'm very concerned about the requirements for donating not more than 30% of a new subdivision to town use for public.
Yeah.
And that's not a change. It's, it's in there, but I just, I just want to.
And, and I, and I'm going to, I want to stop you here, Paxton, because, because you are, because you own a substantial amount of property, I don't think, I don't think this is, this is an appropriate venue.
Then close the door. Close the door. That's fine. That's fine. The door is closed for development.
Are we good? Anybody have anything else?
If, if we could talk about the table permitted uses, for a second. I just think it would be really, it would be more straightforward to have sort of like a legend at the top of it as opposed to, yeah, as opposed to the bottom. Can you hear me, Anne?
Yeah.
Just where the, there's like two stars for one designation, one star for another one, and then the S U P for the special use and then the P. If we could just have some sort of legend just to make that really easy at the top of it. And then going along with sort of what Paxton was talking about, just like the specific wording for me, because our family does do vacation rentals. I don't know, tourist homes. Like if I, if I am going to have a vacation rental, I would not control find tourist homes, you know, and try and find it in the permit. I would type in vacation rental. I don't know. It's just more common language to me.
Your, to your first comment, legend of permitted uses, use table at the top?
Yes, because the, the definition of the stars was like all the way at the bottom.
Yeah, that's no problem at all. Regarding, regarding short-term rentals, um, that, I, that 100%, that is a thing that, that localities all over, probably the world, but definitely all over the United States are addressing. I, it's my opinion and I, we had these discussions at the steering committee, that anything that could be controversial, and please take my word for it, short-term rentals is incredibly controversial. Anything that is controversial needs to have its own process because A, it should just have its own process where, where people are able to just focus on that. And B, because it is so controversial, A, it's, it's, it's not right to slip it through and have it, and have it sort of go under the radar. And B, it, it risks derailing every other change in the U D O and having it not be adapted because it's controversial.
Okay, that's fine.
Well, so it's, it's up there as, as a special use in the, so that's what the harbor line would have been, right? Would be a tourist home?
Maybe that's, I might defer to Paxton on, on the background on that, but I don't know if that's what tourist homes was or not. It's kind of weird because that's only in the B 30 zoning district. That's the only place where it's a permitted or a special use in this case. There are lots of vacation rentals currently operating in the town. So I don't know. It is something that I'm sure will have to be discussed and addressed in further detail at some point in time. I mean, right now, it's kind of one of those things.
May I, I'm going to, I'm going to say something contradictory to what I just said and just like hold them both and, and consider. Another option would be making them permitted by special use so that each one has to go through its own special use process. That's one way of putting it, but it's also kind of like a, a Band-Aid that, that then makes it, it's a Band-Aid that then makes it owner as in the future. As in, sure, you can have them, but every one you have has to go through a public input process and all of your neighbors will be up in arms. If you're going to have neighbors up in arms, I think it would be better to do it all at once and figure out what it looks like to have permitted by right.
But in the, in the age of Airbnb.
Yeah.
How do we, how would we even begin to control that other than to have a blanket rule that, that you cannot do it?
That you cannot?
Yeah, like there, there are a number of vacation towns that do not allow Airbnbs. And that's the rule. That's exactly how they, that's exactly what the rule is, no Airbnbs. And I think they work it in because there's no less than, no less than a week or no less than four, three or four nights, you know? I don't know how, so the suggestion is that we would entertain a special use permit for each individual home?
Well, as, as of right now, if you wanted to get a zoning permit to have a short-term rental, you could get it, well, excuse me, right now in this draft, you could get a special use permit. Any one individual could go do that. But I have, I have been through this process. I've been through this process and, and I promise you that people have opinions about it. Because, and especially in Cape Cod, right? The, the idea that, you know, people's fear, well, I'm not going to speculate on what people's fear is, but, but you could probably imagine.
Well, I, I'm seeing, I'm seeing an absolute head nodding from Barbara, who obviously either has an opinion on it or is her an opinion on it. Is it negative? A, a negative opinion towards it?
Not adding it to the permitted uses, just changing the language because no one's going to look that up.
And I mean, the fact that they're, it's only in the B 30, which is odd too. So it's not even in the residential areas. I don't know how, I don't even know what the, what that definition of tourist homes might be or.
Tour, tourist home, I, I know some things about, if you want to hear.
Yeah.
So tourist home is actually a thing that we don't have anymore. It's like, you've got to, you know, go back to, to, you know, old, old books that you've read, right? So someone in the 1950s is taking a road trip and you stop at a large home. It's kind of like Airbnb, but more, sort of less personal, more established. It's not.
Like a nice hostel.
Like a, like a.
Like a family. Is that what you're talking about?
And maybe they're different, but, but again, that's why, that's why you have to define things in the zoning ordinance. But, but because zoning ordinances in general end up being iterative, you know, we make this change and we add this and then they end up being, you end up having these residual uses that, that, you know, most people don't know what a tourist home is. And so I do think that, and, and we, the change here was from P to, from permitted to special use permit. And that was, like many of those, it's just to, to say, okay, where it was permitted, it is now an S U P process.
Well, if they don't exist anymore, let's pull it out and let's put in what, what does exist.
By right?
I mean, it could just be a permitted use. I mean, I don't know. I mean, but how do you, you have to open up the discussion to like, what do you define as a short-term rental, right? So how do you distinguish between a, you know, less than 30 days? Is it less than 60 days? I mean, there's a whole.
Well, so that, some of the vacation areas do it by the number of nights.
But it's definitely a whole.
But it, it is possible for short-term rentals to drastically change the character of a, of a locality and of a neighborhood.
Right. Yeah, that's, that's why some towns don't let the Airbnbs in.
Right. And I'm, I'm not saying that it's, I just think it, it deserves its own conversation.
Yeah, there's also, yeah, I mean, there's also some, I think, legislation right now in the General Assembly about local governments' abilities to regulate some of that. That, that does tend to pop up fairly frequently. So I don't know. Eventually it might be that municipalities can't prohibit them outright because I think they have some strong lobbyists up there probably in Raleigh that.
Well, there has to be a way for us to, to protect ourselves from some of these awful reports you hear about Airbnb party houses, you know, where, you know, 500 people show up for a house that's rented for a weekend on private property. So there has to be a way for us to protect ourselves from that type of.
Yeah, there's probably some fire code and occupancy aspects of that. Restricted covenants, I mean, there's notifying law enforcement if things are out of hand as well. But I mean, we have probably, we've got maybe 15, maybe different. It's hard to tell because different times we look at VRBO or Airbnb on the map. Depending on availability, they might not all show up, but there's definitely a bunch operating in the town already. We've not had any issues to date with them, so.
There's less than 20. We've not, my knowledge ever got to 200, any of them. Not to say that it will happen in the future. At some point it is a discussion. Dive into that a little bit more, so. There's a lot of discussion.
Because, you know, Paxton, could, could Airbnb her house out to, you know, like some frat party one weekend?
Cool.
And we would have no control of it.
However, would Airbnb, I could, we could use our town parks, residents, pretty, and we could lose our parks if somebody complained about that. Seriously. Yeah. If the conditions of the deeds aren't met, they're going to the parks.
And we need, we need to put, that's something that we'll see a lot in the, in the land uses.
Just saying.
You know, recreation. You know, we want, because we do want to protect that.
So we are going into specifics now?
No. We're going to, I think, are we good to go? Is everybody good to go to adjourn? Anybody have anything else? Anne, thank you so much.
Thank you all. I'm glad. Thank you for a productive meeting. I think this, this really did mark a lot of progress and I look forward to everyone working. And before you adjourn, I think that, we don't have to schedule it right now, but the next step is I'd love to do a workshop with the planning board where I'm actually there in person like a human being.
Did, did we get an answer that we are ready to launch on the community engagement?
I don't know. I mean, regardless of who is leading the process, whether it's the steering committee or the planning board, I don't see any issue. I mean, I think in this process, the more citizen engagement, the better. Nobody's going to fault any of the parties for trying to get people engaged in the process. So I, I don't think that matters. I mean, I think there's no reason that can't start tomorrow and, you know, be in that process of, of engaging the community and that. So I would see issues there.
So can I get a motion to adjourn? Second. Everybody in favor? Okay, we're adjourned. Thanks, folks.
Good night, everyone.